Alright, welcome everyone who is here. Thank you for attending. Thank you for your attendance and your attention to tonight's forum. We were here for our previous city council forum. We thank you for being engaged through that. And I want to welcome you to the forum of the Fond du Lac School District Board. And tonight we have three of the four candidates. Apologies from Luke Frame, he was not able to be here this evening due to prior engagement. But his answers along with all three of these candidates here will be published in written form on the envisioned website tomorrow. So you'll be able to see that along with the recording of this forum. So, and all the answers that he has submitted to these same questions in written form. With that, I will, I guess I'll introduce our moderator for anyone who wasn't here before. But maybe I should introduce myself. My name's Joe Van Heisen. I'm with Envision Greater Fond du Lac. I have owned this tie for about six years and I have finally the right excuse to wear it. So, I don't know if you guys got one of these, but yeah. So, it's my pleasure to host this forum on behalf of Envision Greater Fond du Lac and with the team of course with Tracy. Our CEO is here tonight too. And we thank all of you for being engaged in the political process. For those who have chosen to put their name on the ballot, we thank you. And we thank all of you, the electorate, for paying attention to these issues and engaging with them. So, just thank you for being here. It's great to see you. With that, I'll introduce our moderator, his retired Judge Gary Sharp helping us out yet again for another year in the smashing role of moderator. And I will let him have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, I apologize that my back is to you. But as I expressed earlier, I think the group decided that it was better if you got to see the faces of the candidates instead of me. So it really works out better. But my apologies that my back is to you for the rest of the evening. I'd like to begin by welcoming and introducing the three candidates who are here. Antonio Godfrey Senior is here, Karen Moeen is here, and Tom Oliver is here. And as was expressed previously, Mr. Frame was not able to be here. But again, all of their answers to all of these questions are in written form and they will be available online as well as a recording of tonight's proceeding. So, the four candidates are applying for three open school board seats. These four candidates will be on the election ballot on April 1st. You can find more information on these candidates as well as polling location information, some team voting information, and voter registration information on the city of Fond du Lac's website. Additionally, Envision Greater Fond du Lac will post the recorded version of this forum along with the candidates' written responses, as I've said, on their website and social media pages tomorrow. Before we begin, I want to mention a few things regarding tonight's events. Each candidate will be asked a series of questions. This candidate will have ninety seconds to answer the question. Rebutts will be addressed if they arise. Candidates and those in attendance are asked to please exhibit professionalism to show respect for all candidates and the moderator. Thank you, and the guests. Mindful of the time allotted to each of the candidates for their responses. I would give you a ten second warning before your time expires. I apologize that interrupts your train of thought and what you're saying, but it keeps us going. And finally, that people refrain from using any sort of technology or cell phones during these proceedings. We begin this forum with the same question for all of the three candidates here. Please introduce yourself and answer the question, why are you seeking a seat on the Fond du Lac School District's Board of Education? Again, ninety seconds for your response. And so we'll start with Antonio.
Right. I am Antonio Godfrey. I am the one and only incumbent that is running. There is unfinished business, unfinished work to be done in this district. My role has always been and always will be first and foremost all about, all about each and every children, each and every child that has walked, that walks through the door of the Fond du Lac School District.
Thank you. Karen?
Hey, I'm Karen May. I know it looks like Moeen, but it is pronounced May. It's okay. Funny doesn't. I was a special education teacher in the Fond du Lac School District for thirty-three years. And I enjoyed my entire time in the district. I am running to improve the quality of education in the Fond du Lac School District. And in order to do that, we need to create an environment that supports current teachers and attracts highly qualified teachers to our district. I believe that the Fond du Lac School District should be a place where administrators and teachers work collaboratively to provide an exceptional education for our students. I would like to see better communication between the school board, the administration, administrators, the teachers, and the families of the students in the Fond du Lac School District. With my special ed education background, I would also like to see students with special needs in service in a way that best meets their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom?
Hi, Tom Oliver. I'm a retired county magistrate, which is a summary court judge from where I come from. My wife is from this area and I have a replant once I retired. I make a promise I'd bring her home and try to live up to that. I actually have no particular personal interest in running for the board. Both my children are grown. One is married with two small boys and the other one is a sophomore at W. Roche. What caught my attention was some of the controversies. There's no reason to deny that there were controversies going on in the fall. And it got my original attention. It also got me out of my recliner. I started asking, as anybody here is retired, it's hard to get out of that. But I started asking questions and I found out that there were other challenges going on within the district. And that it just didn't seem like anybody was interested in addressing those challenges and addressing that directly. I was an officer in the United States Army from any Harrison. I know how to address things, you know, pretty directly. It's the way the military runs. So I felt that with my experiences in military, I have experience in this world as well as my court legal experience. Yeah, I was able to, I might be able to bring something to the table that is fresh and new.
Thank you. So, let's begin with this question. What do you believe is the greatest strength and the greatest weakness of the Fond du Lac School District? And how will you build upon and improve each of them? So, we'll start with Karen.
I believe that the greatest strength of the Fond du Lac School District is our teachers and what they have to bring to the classroom. I think we can build on that by allowing teachers to have autonomy in their teaching. I would, I would take a look at the curriculum and see how we can get some liberal room in it will allow teachers to add their own strengths and not be robotic in their teaching. I believe that the greatest weakness of the Fond du Lac School District is where we spend our money. I would take a closer look at where we are spending the money and investigate to see if this is the most efficient use of our funds. I know that we do not get the full funding, the state for special education. So I would like to get involved in pushing for that so we do not have to take it from the general fund.
Thank you. Tom?
I think you read my answer. I too believe that our greatest strength is our teachers. These are people who are dedicated. It's a calling for them. It's just like being a doctor or a minister. This is a calling for those people and they do this out of love, not out of paycheck. And, and I think as Karen has said that, and I think I address it later, is the rigidity of the curriculum needs to be loosened up so that these teachers can do what they're trained to do. And that is teach, and that's to inspire, and that's to get the creative juices of our students flowing. As for the greatest weakness, I believe it's in our leadership. Now, when I speak of leadership, I'm speaking primarily at the administration and some of the issues that have been going on there. But I also speak of it as the board in general. Nobody individually, not all board members, but the board has not taken the time to control the administration and therefore not control finances. And, and I'm not sure who's at fault, why it's happening. But I think the change is needed in order for us to correct that weakness. We build upon our successes by staying student focused and supporting our teachers, supporting the evidence. And we lack our weaknesses by hiring and electing the best people possible. We will also be student focused. Thank you.
Thank you. And Antonio?
I would also echo the same thing with our greatest strength is our teachers, but also the two to add to the other side of the, of the what. He mentioned about our, the finance part of this. Our finances are posted each and every time, each and every meeting. There is a section about finances on the agenda and it's very detailed and very stringent. We just did a full, just a full audit that posted on, from the district's funds on the, the past Monday night from our school board meeting. The districts and one of those companies our size or any corporation has strengths and they have weaknesses and, and there's always room for any, all of us to grow at any time. So one single person can't grow without the other. We all grow it together or separately. So one thing can't grow without the other. So, as a team, together as a team, we struggle together. So collectively, we grow together and collectively, we fail together.
Thank you. Next. As the workforce landscape continues to evolve, how do you believe the school district should adopt or adapt better, to better prepare students for future careers? What specific strategies or partnerships would you advocate to enhance workforce readiness, including hands-on learning opportunities, rear exploration, and collaboration with local businesses? If you can answer that in ninety seconds, you're in. Let's start with Karen.
I do know that we have the Ace Academy, the high school, and they bring in companies to teach students different trades. And that's happening all the time. There is also a youth apprenticeship program in which students can take classes for part of the day and to get credits. And I believe they also are able to collaborate with the tech schools during this time. And then they work the other part of the day. Many of these students end up getting a job that the company, they are doing the apprenticeship with when they finish high school. These are all great programs that I would like to see continued and possibly increase the number of companies that participate in these programs.
Thank you. Antonio?
We have an amazing partnership with a lot of our, our community organizations and our community businesses. As, as Karen just mentioned, our Ace Academy. I was just mad and, and I, I shamed myself for just finding out about this. Fond du Lac High School has an amazing program called Project Grill that, that, that partners with Manowski and Steel that, that builds grills and for local nonprofits and local businesses. And one of the nonprofits that I'm a part of, they're building a grill for, for our organization for, as a, as a gift. So, we, we need to continue to strengthen those relationships with the apprenticeships, the, the different trades and everything else that the business community needs. And to strengthen those and continue to build those relationships with apprenticeships, uh, job shadows and all the above. So, to continue to strengthen those. And also, we, we don't do a great job at, and telling our stories of the great programs that we offer in our district. So we need to start telling that story of the amazing programs that we already have and strengthen those as well and continue to build those and then start to build the other relationships as well.
Thank you. I'm the top.
Sure, you two guys aren't reaching my hand. Something that Antonio just said is that I agree with everything my fellow candidates have said. It seems like the school district almost doesn't exist within the community because the district needs to kind of get this word out here a little bit more about partnerships. I see, I want to see more partnerships established. I know we have some good things going on with tech schools, but why not create internship programs and summer hire programs for kids who are interested in finance? We have a lot of banks around here with law enforcement, fire department, other government entities. Kids aren't just interested in tech school. They're interested in all kinds of fields. This is a great way for businesses to identify potential hires. You know, it's great for potential employees. And through these partnerships, you get to know what these employees are catering to a lot. You hire somebody, any business leaders in here will know, when you hire somebody, you don't know what you're getting. These guys, the partnerships and internships, with these folks, you will know what you're getting.
Thank you. Next question. If elected, how will you ensure transparency and communication between the school board, parents, teachers, and the community? And let's start with Tom, please.
I'm wasting time, I'm sorry. Transparency and two-way communications are two of the core subjects of my campaign. That along with fiscal responsibility and professional accountability. The board members need to make themselves available to everybody in the community, every stakeholder in the community. Teachers, students, parents, staff, business leaders. You know, anybody that's a voter in the school district needs to have access to the board members. Because you can't learn unless you listen to people. You know, you don't have all the answers. Nobody does. But people out there do. So communication is critical. If elected, I intentionally make myself available to all community members. Whether it's through phone calls, electronic communication, meeting people in person, listening sessions if necessary. There, a group of people maybe talk a little bit longer than ninety seconds on subject matter. So, I also believe that it should be available for parents, teachers that are having access issues, they're having a problem. It's not being resolved by the administration. The school board, the school board members should be able to be accessible, attentive, you know, for that person to go to, get answers, and find solutions.
Thank you. Antonio?
I, I, and I don't say this to brag. I'm probably one of seven board members that is really the most active in this community. So I don't say this to brag. I, I answer emails, I answer phone calls. I, I, I do, I, I'm available. Transparency and communication. Yeah, we can be transparent as long as it does not involve breaking confidentiality, or it does not involve an HR issue. So we have to be, we can all say that that's what we're gonna do. But we have to be careful that we don't violate any laws of, of any employment laws when we're, when we're being transparent with, with, with the public. So we have to be careful with that part of it, being transparent. So, there is a, we don't tell our story. I will continue to, I will continue to say that. We don't tell our stories very well. And that is that, that was one of the pillars of the strategic plan. And we, our collaborative culture, we struggled with it as a district. And that has been a, a a lacking part of our district forever. We don't tell our story. And we, we have struggled for years with that problem.
Thank you. And then Karen?
Yeah, so if I'm elected, I will ensure transparency also like they had said by having an open door seat for all through phone calls, emails, meetings. I am planning on having a schedule of the days and times that I will be at each of the buildings so that teachers, other staff, and students can talk with me and I can see what is happening in our schools. And I would also like to have scheduled maybe monthly coffee chats at a local coffee shop or a cafe or something so that anyone can come and talk with me about their concerns or things that they think are going well in our district. Because we want to hear that too. We want to hear things that are going well and also things that we can improve on. When I was talking to my husband about this before, he goes, oh, I'm never gonna see you, am I? So, I, I just want to be out there and available for people to come in and feel comfortable to talk to me.
Thank you. Next question. What are your priorities for improving student achievement and closing the existing learning gaps? And this, the first is Antonio.
Um, I will answer it just like I answered on my question. I wish we didn't have achievement gaps. I, I, I mean, I wish this, 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 it didn't exist because all kids should receive the exact same education. Oh, and it shouldn't matter what the color of your skin is, or it shouldn't matter what your family's financial status is. We need to do a better job in closing the achievement gap, uh, gaps and/or eliminating achievement gaps, period. Because we all, kids should learn the same thing regardless of who they are, of what they look like, or regardless of what their parents' financial status is.
Thank you.
So, student achievement is very important to me. But I am concerned at how we are measuring it with all of the different testing that we do. I feel that sometimes kids are testing more than they're actually learning. And, you know, they seem to be taking tests all the time and teachers are being asked to teach to the test so that the scores will be good for the school report card. I believe that students will do just as well on tests if there are fewer tests and teachers are able to teach and have autonomy in their teaching. We need to remember that the tests are a snapshot of one day in the life of a student. And if they're having a bad day or some crisis is going on in their family or something like that, they're not gonna test well. So we don't, and we don't know that. I would also like to look at how we are structuring student days. Students need to be physically active as well as academically proficient. I am interested in educating the whole child. For instance, elementary children learn better when they are allowed to get their wiggles out throughout the entire day, just twenty minutes at lunch.
Thank you very much. That's Tom. Your response?
First of all, as to any advancement that the district has managed to make in terms of state testing. It's great and everything. I won't take that away from anybody. But of course, as most of us know, that the standards were lowered. Those numbers are a little bit deceptive. I think standardized testing in general is an illusion. As Karen said, you know, it's a snapshot of one day. You can't be teaching to tests. I said earlier that we need to free up teachers and the curriculum. The teachers can inspire children, get their creative juices flowing, that they can get out there and teach them critical thinking skills that will only help, not only help them at school, but help them later in life. And you don't do that by putting them in front of a computer and saying, read this for the next forty-five minutes while we're paying a teacher to be a high-paid mother. So, I think we're setting up this curriculum, reexamining what we're doing and giving these kids an opportunity to get some of the joy back into, into learning and the excitement. They're excited to go to school. Teachers are excited to teach them. Because we're giving them, especially the experienced ones, who have a lot of experience making lesson plans, we're giving them an opportunity to free up some of the restraints on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Sharp, can I rebuttal something with the, with the lowering of the, 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 the standards, the test scores? His response to the lowering of the test scores?
We have enough time. So, if you want to say some kind of a statement, but then I'll give the other committee a chance to say it as well. You know, that's all.
Go ahead. People don't realize this, even though the, the, the standards and the scores were lowered on the state report card, each district, they also subtracted four points from each, each district's total score. So four points total was subtracted from every school district. So, to, to combat that, that statement from the lowers of the lowering of the scores, each district in the state of Wisconsin had four points subtracted from their total score.
Tom, do you want to respond in any way?
Well, and, and that's fine, you know, but it's still about that, it's rewarding. And so the numbers become deceptive in some way. Let's get those standards back to where they need to be. But you know, we still don't need to be teaching to just standardize testing. That's my point, is that we need to let these kids become creative, learn and enjoy school. But I, I, you know, and I, and I agree with you, you know, everybody has got that.
Karen, anything that you'd like to add?
So if it's statewide, but why? Why do we need to lower the standard?
I believe that would be an answer that you would have to ask the Department of Public. They could, they could control that. Nobody, nobody asked them to lower the standards and that was the biggest controversy. It's still, it's still, yes. Yes, it is. It really is.
All right. We have reached our last question and then all of us can get our wheels out. Is your position on the April 1st, 2025 referendum? First candidate is Karen.
Well, I am in favor of the referendum. Of course, I am not a fan of raising anybody's taxes, because that means mine are raised also. But I feel that these are important items and we need to do what is right for our students and staff in the Fond du Lac School District. I, I want to see the secure entrances and updated security cameras at our high school. Right now, to walk into that high school, once they get buzzed in, they can go anywhere. Because it's a few yards before you hit the office. And so we need to, that is super important there. We need to keep all the people in that building safe. And with all the school shootings recently, it's just, you know, across the country. You just never can be sure. And we need to protect everybody. And then part of it is for operations and continuing maintenance, maintenance. We need to make sure that we are able to employ the best staff for our students and keep all of our buildings up so that they have a viable and safe place to learn. We can't, kids aren't gonna be, you know, they're concerned about that we're falling in on them or something like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, like everybody else in here, that may be a property owner, I want to pay more taxes. I support the referendum. That's my short answer, Richard. And there's two reasons. Saving jobs, saving lives, when it comes down to. I want to make sure that we, if worst case scenario came down to it, we lost a hundred jobs, a hundred teachers. To say it in average of fifty thousand dollars a year, that's five million dollars that is snatched out of the community like, like just like that. And if any of you in here are business owners, you know that that's, that could affect your business. And then it begins to snowball. My business isn't making enough money because we've lost people. And now I have to lay somebody else off. And then it goes on and on and on. The ripple effect could be tremendous. And we'll speak about this. But I don't ever, ever want to be in a community, to see a community suffer, leave, that could happen if we don't secure our buildings and we have a bad actor. And tell you firsthand, combat that. Everyone will see that. And so we have to secure this, these schools. Now, it's a big ask. I think it should have been brought, you know, cut into two different questions. But we've got to get the security of the high school and some other of the schools. They need to be more secure. There have been three hundred and ninety shootings in schools since nineteen ninety. I haven't called by it happened. Whilst there were two hundred and forty children, ten seconds, to the school shootings. That's why I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. And then Antonio?
Yeah, absolutely. I am in, in support of, of the, this referendum. I'm the only person that's sitting here that's the board member that, that, that voted to, and for this. But to give people an honest answer here, the, the last thing But to give people an honest answer here, the, the last thing that the board want, that me as a board member wanted to do was to, to come to the community to ask for help to, to fund our schools. And I mean, I'm, I'm gonna point the finger where it needs to be pointed, and I'm gonna point it right at Madison. If they would fund our, fund our schools the way it should be funded, this is not a, a pointer finger at the, the, the board, the administrators, overspending or, or doing or have getting wants over needs. This, this is a funding issue, point blank. That's where the finger needs to be pointed at, and I know a lot of people are pointing the fingers at the board and the administrative team for overspending or whatever they point us at for this referendum. The last thing I wanted to do, and I can speak for my, the other six people that are on that board, was to go to an operations referendum to ask, ask the community and to raise our taxes, raise taxes in our community. So I wholeheartedly support this referendum.
Thank you very much. That concludes the Fond du Lac School District Board of Education Candidate Forum hosted by Envision Greater Fond du Lac. Thank you all, the three of you, for taking time to provide your responses to these questions and issues facing the school district. To those in attendance and listening at home, please be sure to vote on April first. You can find more information about the election on the city of Fond du Lac's website to the candidates. Thank you for stepping up, for putting yourselves out there to support and improve our schools.
Thank you all once again for joining us here on this candidate forum. And we began, mind you, all the written answers from our candidates along with recording this video must be available on our website tomorrow. As a reminder to about Envision, we're very proud of the work that we do in partnership with the school with many school districts in the area for preparedness for our students. And Antonio mentioned Project Grill. That is one of several Envision Greater Fond du Lac programs where we partner with not only the Fond du Lac School District, but others. And I invite all of you to Festival Food Show Friday, May ninth, where the Project Grill unveiling, where you can see all of the grills, including one that the students at Fond du Lac will be creating. When it's your left, buddy. Good question. Our website is envisiongreaterftl.com.